Phase one, because I do want to see something out there. I don't know the private entity, what impact they had on the approvals. I know the approvals went pretty quick for West Palm. From what West Palm and Mr. Brown, you could come up here and explain that. Got on the pilot and or had discussions and got the pilot going. It was an incredibly fast turnaround. It wasn't a year. It was in six months. So I'm kind of a little bit confused as to the three months pilot, which I think it's a very small data pool, in my opinion, depending when we decide to run, depending when it runs, because of education, operational. Also, in terms of the outside part, that whole fixed route on phase one is kind of a little bit challenging to me as well, just because of the types of spots, unless you're picking people up at the outskirts and then like kind of bringing them into the Meisner Park. So that was an issue. Obviously, I like the electric vehicles. That helps us our race to zero. The hybrid shuttle, a fixed route, more employees that are working at Brick and obviously at Guidant, a headquarter that's here. But what do we have to do to move this along from a policy perspective? I want to hear that from legal, maybe not today, but I want to see that. And then, again, I know we have to look at cost, but if it's just we're focusing on cost to provide that phase one that's so perhaps ineffective, then how do we get to phase two with maybe a little bit more funding where we're going to have a good pilot and where we're going to have a good showing of the product?
Okay. Mr. Brown, can you come up for a second, please? Thank you. Can you give us briefly, in your experience in some of the other cities and the cities that are, as the mayor said, going just right in the middle of the street as opposed to just this internal thoroughfare, what's your opinion on what it would take for us to kind of really start out with the kind of enhanced phase one? You know, what would it take to do that and how long would it take?
So the experience from West Palm Beach was actually very, very good. From start to finish, we took four and a half months. And the longest, normally longest pull in the tent is to get the approval from the National Highway Safety Administration. That takes longer longer because you need to plan the route. They want to see the route. They want to see the stops. They want videos of the routes to assess the, you know, safety and the environmental situation. That normally takes a long time, but in West Palm Beach it didn't. It was very fast. There was a super engagement suddenly. So that was in the January timeframe. If you believe it or not, the longest amount of time it took to get a license plate. So, and that was longer than the NHTSA application. So in the end of the day, we put that also off. And so that's not, you know, we have everything now. The vehicle is registered. Tallahassee knows what that vehicle is. To extend the route, and my advice is to start small, and that goes then pretty fast. When you want to have an extension, then NHTSA will take a look at the proposal and the results from that previous trial, the smaller one, phase one. And then for the second one, it goes normally faster. We have a very good reputation with NHTSA, so thanks God. And that went pretty fast in some other projects we had. I would say six, eight weeks to get things started with NHTSA approval. And then you have for another addition of phase one to phase two, it goes quicker because they have the results of phase one, because we need to provide it. We need to provide data. We need to provide videos. We need to provide all sorts of topics per day. And to the ridership, again, they normally tell us also what would be the hours of operation because the highest level NHTSA approves is a vehicle, autonomous vehicle in mixed traffic, transporting people. That's the highest level you can achieve. Normally, you do that in a pilot setting without mixed traffic. So I would say six plus weeks for second phase. It takes maybe another four weeks on top of it, something like this. But, you know, I cannot really predict 100%. So it has different areas and it depends also on the route, which streets we go, what, how many stops, how many additional stops, and also the speed. This vehicle, and that's what we see all over the world, is up to 25 miles an hour. That's it, right? So nobody gives you permission for more than 25 miles an hour, which is normally the limit. And it's okay so far. We have not seen that somebody wanted to have a higher speed.
So like a golf cart, it can't operate on roads. At least it's my understanding that it can't operate on roads that are more than 10 miles per hour over what its maximum speed is. Is that, is that my?
Yeah. It's a similar kind of request, but, you know, we say normally we act in an area which we have to define with the route, then the stops, and then the speed limit. So, and we suggest not to go higher than 25 miles an hour. So I would say phase one, for NHTSA, it's all the time good to have the data, analyze the data, and then phase two and phase three goes faster.
So you're okay, or you think it is the best course of action to go with limited fair phase one, even though to the mayor's point, we might not get like the true ridership capture that we're hoping for because it'd really be shuttling people within a place that's already excessively pedestrian and between garages and things like that. But you're okay with that because it will at least get us there, after which maybe then we could push together. If it's successful, we could push into phase two, to my colleague's point, a little bit faster than, you know, if everything goes smooth.
Yes. We will win on the back end. When we start with phase one, get the data and get the results in for a period of time, we will win on the back end with faster phase two and phase three, whatever we want to apply.
Okay. Are we good with that? Do I see some consensus there?
Just a clarification. It says that this vehicle goes 25 kilometers per hour, not 25 miles per hour, which is 15 miles per hour. Just wanted to.
It's a typo.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Good catch. Okay. So Mr. Beer, do we have some direction? We are going to start on this program, but we're going to, it's going to be successful. We're going to capture the data and with, with all these positive things happening, hopefully we can move to phase two a little bit, a little bit faster. And in the interim, we'll analyze some of the advertising and other issues that might have some different issues. We'll analyze that with legal after. Does that, that sound good?
I'm not sure I fully have direction. I think with the, with the as shown phase one program, we're going to come back before the body and amend the circuit contract to include that as part of it. And it was for four days a week or to try and get an updated proposal to go with the seven days a week?
That's an open item. We, do we need to know that? Wait, was it not, did we not want to do Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, just because it's super low ridership? Was that the idea?
Really, the whole thing from staff's perspective, we kept pushing back from a cost perspective because I know it, we didn't want to come out in the pilot program and we're really trying to make it commensurate with our existing circuit shuttle. So that was the, that was the initial, the initial start point. So we can certainly go back and get the updated proposal for the seven days a week. I think in order to really have that out and be visible, that's a, an important part of the, of having guided work to make it successful.
Well, it's my opinion that it should be seven days a week, and I think the funding is there in the CRA, but obviously, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Chair, I was going to lean the other way because it's the pilot. I want, because again, I think phase one is really, its value is the test. It's not the actual, that phase is not going to be particularly valuable. It's to get the kinks out. So if, if staff can do this and propose it to NHTSA, I would say do four days a week, get some weekend, weekday, get that as a representative sample set and then, but apply with NHTSA immediately to get to phase two and three. I'm not interested in funding phase one, the shuttle back and forth along Plaza Real for a gear. If the timeline is more of what Mr. Brown says, I think that's more viable. And I'd suggest that we have a three-month milestone, a six-month milestone, because if we're not there yet, if for whatever reason, we're only running the shuttle for phase one for six months and we've got all the data and we're just waiting for approvals, then we might suspend that because it's just, it's costly and it, I don't think it's, I think it's just testing value only, not service value.
Unless you actually need the number of days for the test. The question is, if you do only four days, does it extend the testing period?
That is, I, I don't know the answer of that question from the testing period day, but I understood we will evaluate with, that with Guidant to determine if it's necessary for the NHTSA approval, identify which proposal makes sense, identifying that from a cost perspective, it's really just the initial trial period to, to begin that. And then really, the goal, from what I'm hearing from the commissioners, is to get to phase two or three and really have, have that be more full-blown service.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I guess I, I come down, I, I think that the goal of the phase one is really to get our foot in the door with the federal government and show that it can be done and be done safely. And it's, we're not going to be providing, we're not going to be providing a lot of transportation to a lot of people in that period, and that's fine. Because if it eases the time and eliminates, makes it more efficient to get into phase two and three, I think that is the goal. So I'm not even sure we need to have a full 12 months in that case. I think maybe we're all saying the same thing. If you can get into fa, into the application phase for phase two after three months of data, even if it's on four days a week, I'm not really sure it matters one way or the other, so long as four days a week is sufficient from the federal government's perspective, I think we do that. And then that way, we can make it more robust and expand it sooner without having it to cost a lot to not really ferry that many people around from time to time. I would say we can do it over three months if that's sufficient, then from that point on, we can get into phase two and then eventually phase three.
I think everyone is saying the same thing. Is that right? Mr. Strucker?
Yeah.
I have a follow-up. In terms of policy, because you mentioned legal, was that more for advertising or is that just policy for speed limits or other? Because you mentioned traffic signals, like you mentioned a lot of things that you were not going to capture in that pilot because there's, none of that is really on that phase one.
That is correct. And that's more of the opportunity to have both, really, really trying to run it simultaneously is to have this portion of the pilot running while staff has the opportunity to discuss. And it's not, the city attorney's office has engaged us immediately in the process to support and see if it had to be a designated route or if there was some special requirement for a permit. From everything we've seen, that's not the case. It was more an understanding of would, it's just based on the speed limit and some of the, some of the elements of the route getting out on Meisner and then Palmetto Park Road. Those are higher volume roadways than I think some of the elements from West Palm. So staff is, is while the pilot is running over the several months, evaluate, evaluate those options and the operational, the operational ability for Guidant to, to meet the expanded routes.
Just one follow-up. I guess for my direction purpose for me is that whatever needs to happen so that we can get quicker into phase two and three, that we do that, that we try to be a West Palm Beach in this scenario because they were up and running in four months and their ridership continues to go higher. So we should be working on this simultaneously, and I'm sure city attorney's office could reach out to city attorney's office there. And this is happening throughout the entire state. This is not the only pilot. This is not the only area where they're putting these autonomous vehicles and not be delayed so that by the time that we expand that we're not already behind, because we're always just trying to play catch-up when it comes to, I feel like a lot of the things that we do, just to try to, to get across the line. And, and I appreciate staff and I appreciate Guidant and Circuit negotiating with us on pricing and making sure that it fits the model, but we always need to start thinking in the extra step. I feel like we just think like A, B, but we got to go all the way through Z. So we should have already been thinking. I've been saying about the policy for weeks about what do we need to change internally to get this done? And I was really focusing on Brick. I wasn't even focusing so much on Meisner Park, but now I want us to focus on both. So whatever needs to happen, that's what I would like to see so that we're ready to go as soon as we can to push off phase two and phase three. And also knowing, and also for the public, that that phase one is not going to give us the ridership because it's, it's just not there. I think that area, the, the beta test that we're putting out there is just not what we're looking for. So I think I've, I've been pretty clear, whatever you need from the council or from an operations perspective, if we could be more proactive, that's what I would like to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Beer, do you have clear direction?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Just a personal note, I had a very good meeting with Mr. Brown in my office going through, going through the merits of this and the successes of the company and what it's doing in other cities and the value, the future, the data, you know, the data spots that we can potentially get. Remember, this is a vehicle that's not going to be running red lights. It's not going to be speeding. It's, 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 it's going to give us more data than we can imagine about safe or unsafe intersections. Once it starts expanding can really help in future planning and traffic analysis. So I am, like Mr. Strucker, I'm very excited about this opportunity and, and being, Mr. Beer, as you said, a tool, you know, potentially to, to quote, "bridge" that, you know, that technological gap. Like I said, I understand from Mr. Brown also that, right, we're not yet at the place where the vehicle is permitted to cross railway tracks and things like that. But with the future, with the right data and the right planning, we will be there and we will be prepared. So I'm, I'm very excited for it. Thank you very much. Mr. Brown, still your report?
No additional report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Canada, your report?
I have no report.
Thank you very much. Commissioners' report, Mr. Thompson?
No report. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. The only, I just wanted to make one more comment, you know, in strategic planning. We talked about, a lot about innovation and technology, and this is really a great step in the right direction for that. And so I'm looking forward to. It's tough with the pilot because it's going to be during the summer too, so it sounds like, so, you know, may not get the exact numbers we want, which is, again, we're just looking to get to phase two and three. But the other thing is that it can relieve some traffic congestion. So we're not going to fix traffic, but it can relieve some congestion, so I'm excited about that. And that's all I have to say today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Strucker?
Yes, on the heels of Ms. Nochlis, I agree. I'm excited about the pilot. If I seem a little frustrated is because we've been working on this for almost a year. So it just, everything seems to take a little longer when it comes to being bold and moving forward. And I think we just had our strategic planning last week where we were talking about technology and innovation. And I know there's so much out there that we can utilize, even just from, you know, adaptive signals, even sensory for, from certain areas of just like crosswalks that are sensory or sensor, like people walk through it and they turn on and you know that they're going, the person's approaching. So again, I know I'm a little bolder. I think Mayor Singer said that last week, but I, I really think that this is going to be beneficial when it comes to our fixed stops. And then we'll see how it interacts with Boca Connect, and maybe that's something that we'll maybe possibly scale back and your increase here. Again, one of the things, and I thank the council and I thank the staff, is that we're all, we're thinking already of innovative ways to move people around in the downtown and then always thinking also here in this area, which I kind of refer to Midtown Brick. So thank you to staff and thank you to Guidant and Circuit for being partners with us on this new journey. Thanks.
Thank you. Well said. Mr. Mayor?
Looking forward to our centennial. No further report. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have a, thank you very much. And I have a brief report. Of course, things in the downtown are, are going well, a lot of maintenance occurring. We talked about this in strategic planning. We talked about just traditional maintenance and we talked about enhanced maintenance. So I'd like to thank the staff again, the gazebos being, being painted for the first time in many, many years and the continuing infrastructure work that's happening with fiber optic. And our landscaping downtown is very much appreciated. Of course, now that certain things have changed with respect to what's going on in the amphitheater, I started talking briefly with some of the, some of the staff members and Mr. Brown about the field next to the amphitheater, which is, you know, kind of, let's say beaten down a little after all these festivals that we have. But also, again, one of the questions for Mr. Brown, I guess, is my understanding right now is that every time we have a festival, we put up a fence and then we take down a fence. And then obviously, you know, there's a redundant cost there and it might not be so expensive, but is it something that we looked into, just having a permanent, like nice fence there?
No, I wasn't aware of this question until right now, but we have not looked into a permanent fence because we were expecting someone to be developing that property. That is not happening, so this is something that we can consider in terms of long-term of the facility. But there may be other things that come up as well that would say we do not want a permanent fence.
Okay. You know, because again, just looking at the cost of 20 to 30 festivals and then the per festival event fence time, it seems like that could be a redundant cost, but maybe it's something that I hope we could look into.
Something to be considered, yes.
Appreciate it. Again, with some other field things, now that we are, you know, keeping the amphitheater for at least a short to the midterm, we do have to maintain it and it, it is a well-utilized space. But likewise, kind of in just my thought process, you know, I love to do research and one of the things that I take my time is looking over some of the old minutes. And one of the things that we're able to do together with the Historical Society is kind of look at where we are, right, and where we were, you know, to our government campus. So 60 years ago, city leaders planned ahead for the future infrastructure. I'm not going to read it, but basically the summary here is that city leaders were looking at the 10-year future needs for our water plan. And the bottom of this page talks about refinancing funding for revenue-based bonds, you know, coming into the city after it's time to pay for a lot of these things. And we're in a very similar way. Once all these future needs came up, the mayor at the time, this is August of 1963, talked about the current status for acquiring some kind of very specific properties that are necessary to the redevelopment of the downtown at that time. They also talked about building a new police department at the time, was also a new internal court and fire headquarters. They also talked with the director of Public Works on redoing some things in Pearl City at the time. And they also talked with the director of Recreation at the time, James Rutherford, to do a recreational master plan. And that the mayor and the director were doing, were doing a master recreation plan at that, at that time too. So this is August of 1963, right? It could literally be last week that we, because we're talking about the same exact thing. So yeah, I might have been mistaken as strategic planning. I was saying we're in Boca Raton 2.0, but really, this was already done. So really, we're in Boca Raton 3.0. And so of course, this was passed at the time in 1963 in August. The plans to develop the civic center and the community center were, they took three months to do, so they were in November, which was approved. And of course, as we know from the Historical Society's new exhibit at our current community center, they were built and dedicated in August of 1964. So within a year, it was thought about, designed, planned and built. And that is the original city or second city hall and the community center, which were then, of course, changed, right?
And within three months, we moved half the staff back to the old city hall. Just remember.
Which one?
We went from this 1964 city hall that you're showing here, we took the building department and the engineering department and sent them back to Old Town Hall because there wasn't enough room in the city hall that the city had just built.
Yeah. And you weren't with the city at that time?
I was not here at that time, but I can assure you that that occurred.
Yeah, okay. Just, you know, because you have the personal knowledge.
The point I'm making is that good planning is always warranted.
Yes, I appreciate that. And of course, you know, this mid-century modern, now it's back in style. You know, my opinion, we shouldn't have touched it. But, you know, but of course, things happened. They happened fast, but they did happen with, with a plan and all those things. And we are, we were at that point again, 61 years later, where we're really, you know, at a very similar precipice. Likewise, neighboring cities are in a very similar situation to our CRA with respect to infrastructure projects and P3s. This is the notice of bond issuance for Pompano Beach. And again, I won't, I won't read it into too much detail, but just to reflect, they might be a little ahead of us chronologically as to what they're doing. Their CRA bond issuance that they're looking forward is doing roadway, brick pavers, utility boxes, street lighting, milling, striping, paving the road, landscaping, pedestrian bridges, public parks, open space, drainage, improvements to water, sewer, signage, traffic signals. This is cut and paste for what we have to do here in Boca Raton and our CRA and our financing as well. Our CRA is in a very similar situation to responsibly manage and finance our needed work as well. And of course, as part of our downtown master planning and as part of sometimes some of the, some of the things going on in Tallahassee, these are things that we're not going to be able to delay for, as we know, much longer. We are going to need to start in the very near future. Of course, that's what we're planning for. We're funding them from our tax increment financing, which has a limited duration, which expires in 2042, and a proposed public-private partnership. This is to benefit the people like in 1964, the people then and the people in the future. This is what we're striving for and this is what we're planning for. Happy 100th birthday, Boca Raton. The next meeting will be after our centennial. There's going to be a lot of great events. I'm sure the mayor's going to talk about them at the next meeting. You can go online as well and visit them all at the MyBoca site or the downtown Boca Org site. So with nothing further coming before us, we will adjourn this meeting at 2:27 PM. So with nothing further coming before us, we will adjourn this meeting at 2:27 PM.
Good afternoon and welcome to a workshop meeting of the Boca Raton City Council. It is Monday, May 12, 2025. The time is 2:33. Our first item of business today will be proclamations and presentations, and we have one of each. First, we have a proclamation for National Safe Boating Week. And I'm pleased to invite to the lectern Mario Bai, Coast Guard Academy Admissions Parter, and past, excuse me, I'm all over the place today, past Flotilla Commander Tom Thayer of the U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary Flotilla 36, who'll accept the proclamation as Ms. Sins Riza.
Whereas boating is a beloved recreational activity for many Boca Raton residents and visitors who enjoy our waterways and the promotion of boating safety contributes to a more secure environment for all. And whereas, on average, 650 people die each year in boating-related accidents in the United States, and 75% of boating fatalities are caused by drowning. And whereas, the vast majority of those accidents are caused by human error or poor judgment and not by the boat, equipment, or environmental factors. And whereas, a significant number of boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year would be alive today had they worn their life jackets. And whereas, the city of Boca Raton supports the goals of the United States Coast Guard, National Safe Boating Council, and Safe Boating Campaign, including raising awareness of the importance of life jackets and the start of the year-round effort to promote safe boating. Now therefore, I, Scott Singer, Mayor of the City of Boca Raton, Florida, do hereby proclaim May 17 through May 23, 2025, as National Safe Boating Week in Boca Raton, and urge all those who boat to practice safe boating habits.
Well, Honorable Mayor Singer, esteemed members of the council and distinguished guests, on behalf of Flotilla 36, located right here in Boca Raton at the intersection of Spanish River Boulevard and A1A, I am honored to accept this proclamation. Boca Raton's stunning waterways are not only scenic escapes, but they're cherished destinations and a source of pride for Boca Raton. As a city that, you know, appreciates coastal living, Boca Raton has always embraced the boating lifestyle, whether it's leisurely cruising down Lake Boca or experiencing some exhilarating offshore adventures. But with the privilege of all that access comes the grave responsibility of being stewards for our environment. So I applaud the mayor and council for their leadership in promoting safe boating, and would like to take this opportunity to remind one another that safety is key to ensuring that the waterways are a source of adventure, relaxation, and lasting memories for the next 100 years.
Tom Thayer here, just a couple comments. First of all, National Safe Boating Week starts on Saturday, the 17th, and the flotilla has numerous activities, including vessel examinations at Sugar Sand, not at Sugar Sand, at San, what's the name of it?
Silver Palm.
Silver Palm Park, Silver Palm Park. And so that and numerous other activities going on, including our cooperation for many, many years with West Marine. And I'm holding a vest. You don't need one quite like this, but certainly West Marine has marine vests, that boat vests. Be sure that they are all Coast Guard-approved. And we've got a lot of water and a lot of activity going on constantly on the water. So encourage that. And the follow-up to that is, I mentioned it every year that we do this, we have way too many child drownings in Florida each year. So make sure that our little kids are pool-proof, waterproof, and whatnot, all kinds of swimming programs, including his YMCA programs. So get our kids waterproof, swimming around, having a good time in the water, and wear the vest when you're out on the vessel. Thank you.
Thank you. Take a photo. Thank you. And now we're pleased to have a presentation on the Festival of the Arts Boca 2025 and invite Executive Director Joanna Marie Kay to give a presentation. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, and thank you for having me here. It's a pleasure. My main purpose today is to say thank you for your incredible support and to tell you how this year went and what we have going on here. So in 2025, we welcomed over 6,700 attendees who spent $260,048 locally. Now, that dollar figure comes from the American for the Arts, and that is a figure, that's a number they spend outside of tickets. So that's what they spend when they come to dinner and when they spend time in Boca Raton to attend the festival. Another interesting fact, out of those 6,700 attendees, 21% of them came from out of the county, and 61% came from out of Boca Raton. So we're bringing people from other cities, other counties to Boca Raton to participate in our event and to visit our wonderful city. As you can see, we have over $213,000 in ticket sales, with the festival itself spent over $200,000 on local businesses. That would be anything from hospitality to printing, everything that we did to run the festival that was purchased from Boca Raton businesses. Our total impact, you can see, is over $1.2 million. Our outdoor advertising all over Meisner Park. And our social media and e-blasts, we actually have a really good click-through rate, 1.7 is well above the industry average. Industry average is actually about 1%. So we really do a great job on getting people to open and click through on all of our e-blasts. They're a very effective way of communicating with people. We have over 5,000 subscribers. And of course, our online playbill, you can see your beautiful ad right there, and all of the ads that are in our digital playbill link directly to the websites of the businesses that they represent. Print advertising, quite a bit of it, as you can see. We also reached over 5.5 million television and radio impressions. Radio is WLRN and Legends Radio, television CBS 12, WXL, and WPBT. And also, we have a trade deal with Hotwire Communications, who also has television ad Our digital presence, as you can see, we had over 100,000 page views, over 47,000 users. Our opening weekend was incredibly exciting. The Dallas Brass Night, opening night, we had 103 students from both Boca West and Boca Raton High School performing onstage with Dallas Brass. Pavarotti Voices Opera Gala, that was a collaboration with Opera Naples, where we had the Widow of Luciano Pavarotti here and the winners of the Pavarotti Vocal Competition performing. And then on Sunday, we had Nestor Torres, a world premiere of his A Neo Dance story, which was quite spectacular. Our Authors and Ideas Series takes place during the week. Of course, we had Doris Kearns Goodwin with us, talking about her latest book. We showed the documentary film Life in the Doghouse about Danny and Ron's rescue. Amy Herman did The Art of Perception, and Carl Hyacinth was there on Thursday, and he was a hoot and a half. Our closing weekend featured Back to the Future with live orchestra, an evening of contemporary ballet, where we also had some FAU dance students perform in that, on that evening. And of course, we ended with our wonderful Boca Raton Centennial Concert. I know many of you were there, and it was a really great event. It actually ended with a live conga line, so the audience really appreciated it. Our community engagement and educational outreach, we really had an exceptional year this year. I already mentioned that we had 103 kids from Boca West and Boca High School performing. We also had, since Nestor Torres was at that opening night, that's also the night we presented the winners of our music competition this year, which was Winds and Brass. We had two flute players and a trumpet player who won. And when Nestor Torres saw them receive their awards, he invited all three of them and two other trumpet players from the Dreyfus School of the Arts to perform with him on his performance on that Sunday. And when I was backstage and I saw the trumpet player who won second place, and I know for a fact that most trumpet players not only play classical, but they also play jazz, I asked him if he had a jazz trio, and he said yes, and they played at the party that was hosted by Tate Pitney at the museum. So we had quite a few students represented in the festival this year. You see, up top, we had workshops for dancers of all ages at FAU with our local visiting artists. We had, we had a replica of the time machine there. You can see, it actually has my son's birth date on it, May 9, 2002. We also had Amy Herman do a presentation at the Lynn Women's Health and Wellness Institute at Boca Raton Regional Hospital. So we were very much in the community this year. And next year, our 20th anniversary, and we already have invited back some of our favorite artists from years past. Time for Three will be returning. Postmodern Jukebox will be opening the festival. Postmodern Jukebox, you might remember, was the final performance in 2020. A few days later, the world stopped. So we're very happy they're coming back under better circumstances. And also Conrad Tao first came to the festival when he was 13 years old. He is now a resident artist at the New York Philharmonic and the Aspen Music Festival. He's a big star now, and he's coming back. So we are very excited. And we have some more things in the hopper that I can't quite tell you about, maybe a major Broadway and television star who might be coming, but more to come. And of course, the beautiful, you see the picture, the beautiful tent, the tent so important to us there at the festival. Thank you very much for putting it up every year. It is a really big deal for us. I also want to mention, I know you are aware of the bed tax situation, and I want you to know how much it does affect the festival. Of course, we get a very sizable grant from the Cultural Council for Palm Beach County and the Tourism Development Council, Tourist Development Council. So if you have any, if you would like to talk with any of your people, your friends in the legislature, and tell them, please keep the bed tax for arts and culture, the festival greatly appreciates that. That would be huge for us, to be able to keep that very sizable grant. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, council members. Any questions? Ms. Aquiles.
I think I asked this question last year, but maybe you don't know the answer, but you said 21% of people came from out of county and 60?
61% came from outside of Boca.
And do you know how they got here?
I don't.
Okay. I think last year I specifically asked if you knew if people took Bright Line to Boca.
Yeah, we don't have data on that, unfortunately.
Okay, and do you encourage in all of your advertising and print and everything that you do when people do come here to Boca to use the Boca Connect to get around?
You know, I was, I was thinking that, as I was watching the CRA meeting, I think we should. I think, I think maybe even we should put a whole ad, you know, from the city, talking about Boca Connect, because parking in Meisner Park can be challenging, and I think any way that we can help alleviate that, and Boca Connect is the perfect way to do that. Absolutely.
Thank you.
For the questions? Thank you very much, Ms. Kay. Looking forward to more information as the festival gets closer.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Our next item of business is board interviews, but we have no applicants for these two vacancies. We are looking for an AIA architect and an electrical engineer for these two boards. So if you know someone or are someone, please encourage them or yourself to apply. We'll now turn to public requests. I do have one card from Josh Joffe. Mr. Joffe, if you'd like to come forward, please, give your name and address. You have up to three minutes. Then after that, anyone else who wishes to speak?
Thank you to the council. My name is Josh Joffe. I'm at 5301 Northwest Second Avenue. I heard about this meeting, there was some, I guess you'd call gossip, and some nonofficial notices floating around the condominium. I'm going to quickly, I set a three-minute thing here. These are very deep issues. I'm just going to breeze through like five bullets, and if any, I attest that some of these issues that I deal with do apply to Boca Raton. I am a, I've been sort of put into sort of a whistleblower situation during my time here in Florida, which exceeds 12 years, specifically in the environmental areas as well as the condo spaces. And in fact, I have two books, there's already full drafts on them. One's called Climatosis, the other one is called Condo Whistleblower. I have a dot com, although Climatosis isn't up for both of those, whatever you want to call them, titles, brands. I'm not really doing this in the right order, but I'll just quickly, going as fast as I can. Climatosis, two bullets on that. I very fully evaluate the progression, the evolution of discussion about the climate, which is very big in our society. And the second bullet is, I completely and totally, using science, lack of a better word, eviscerate the assumptions with respect to capture, carbon capture, and embodied carbon. Even though it's practiced very widely in the world and the nation, my book completely shows in context and foundationally that those practices are false. Okay, let me jump to the immediate issues. We're adjacent to the future North Park. There is rumor of Skateboard Park. Okay, before the, let me go back to that. Don't worry, I could listen two minutes here. I realize part of what I was looking at could fall into the CRA. I have some interest, I've developed my own algorithms for green zoning that incorporate the best of TOD urbanism, as well as sort of a Francis Lowomsted approach. Anyone has questions on that? Present it to a senior CNU official. Jump, just going super fast. Back to the skateboarding park, oh my God. I'm suggesting to apply TDR principles to the balance between hardscaping and greenscaping. Leave it at that. I also worked on a major project called The Overline over many years, which originally, from the get-go, looking at options of putting what's the Bright Line underground. I guess I somehow covered, as I said, I tried to just breeze these five bullets here, and I'd be happy to speak to any officials in the future. I did reach out to the Sustainability Department. I have a standard, either 15 plus 15 presentation of my book, or there's a more full-hour lecture version. I have presented to, and I'm wrapping this up, senior national presidents of national engineering and other related organizations. If you check me out, you'll see I have eight licenses. I have references from three of them.
Thank you, Mr. Joffe.
And I know that Boca likes to be at the forefront of environmental and condo issues, and I would suggest maybe I'd be happy to speak to others in the government of my findings and research over recent years. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make a public request?
Jonathan Ungian, 6501 Congress Avenue. So I may not have been in the crowd for your strategic planning, but I did listen in. And there was a lot of good discussion on high-level points involving this city. Keep coming back to this zoning district that we're in, the ripest part of town as a whole for development. I'd love to see good development, development that does what this city intended to do long ago with PMD. The city's come a long way from PMD to now CIMD, but there's a lot more to go. And when you And when you, you know, in the discussion, it's what do you envision in 2050? And like, getting off of 95 and making a right turn onto Congress. The visual is, I mean, just, just do it and see, like, what can you envision? Because right now, it's nothing. Right now, you see two big buildings there, residential, but then nothing. You know, and sure, there may be more coming, but let's make a bigger plan. Something that makes economic sense for property owners to do. At 20 units per acre, it doesn't. You're only getting the large properties that are keeping their older buildings, even including Office Depot, because that's getting to be an older building 20 years or so. And they're keeping the older building. They're keeping all that square footage, whether it's brick. They're keeping that old building. You can say it's historical. I'll keep my opinions to myself on that. But the reality is, is we're not doing right development. We're not getting rid of the older buildings in any of these projects. We're just putting new buildings next to old buildings. And that's not smart development. And Ms., I say it over and over again, Councilmember Naklis fought for 2,500 square feet in these monstrosities that are being built. At, in reality, almost 100 units an acre, if you're actually talking about the development that it's going on. It's basically at what you're doing in the downtown, but you're forcing these property owners to, again, keep their old outdated buildings and then build new right next to it. And that's not smart. So enable your qualified staff, who would love to study these things, who drive down these roads. You drive down these roads here today. How much traffic did you see? So this is the city's future. Envision what you're envisioning in the downtown, and let's call this not LARP anymore. Let's like get revolutionary in this district, because there's no light industrial and research really going on around here. And create a downtown 2.0 or 3.0 in this area, because this is where the downtown should be. And this is where the dense development should be. And let's open these discussions to do that. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to make a public request? All right, well, thank you. That closes the time for public requests. We'll turn to questions concerning tomorrow night's agenda under review of regular agenda items. Any council members have questions they wish to raise for tomorrow night? Then we can always bring them up tomorrow. So we'll turn now to future agenda matters and items of public concern. And again, we are back with our Government Campus Partnership Opportunity. We'll first turn to Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Lukasik is going to give us the update today on the upcoming schedule. Very important that we realize what we're going to be doing and how important it's going to be, and then a couple of additional updates.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brown. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So to Mr. Brown's point, I wanted to touch on some important milestones and meeting dates that we have coming up. We have a lot of work to do before you have to take some formal action on interim master plan. So I wanted to talk about what we need to do in order to get to that point in time. Some of the things that we're going to ask of, ask of you to try to get some feedback. And then I wanted to talk a little bit about some of the teams that are meeting and some of the work groups that have been established, just to give you some perspective related to how the review process is already starting with this, between the city and Terra Frisbee. So let me talk about the schedule first. The first thing I wanted to make sure that, and you probably do remember, but just to make sure that you remember, we do have an interim master plan and sustainability plan that's due today. So we should be receiving that from Terra and Frisbee sometime today. That, that will quickly get distributed to staff. That'll be part of the review process as well as all of you. So as soon as we receive it, you'll have it in your hands as well. The next thing I want to talk about is the need for some individual meetings with all of you. Very, very tight timeframe, but we do want to start having some individual conversations with you all so we can talk about a couple of important things. One is our short-term lease options, our long-term space needs for City Hall, and then our interim master plan. That'll get, hopefully, that'll be submitted today. But before I talk about a couple of those items, I want to introduce you to Will Portfolio. Will's been our tenant rep as we've been going through the process of looking for and identifying the appropriate swing space or short-term space that we'll need if we vacate the site or when we vacate the site during development. So I wanted to have Will just talk a little bit about the process. Obviously, we're still in the, still in the process of negotiating with a couple of the property owners, so we don't want to get too deep into the conversation of the details of that negotiation. But I wanted Will to have the opportunity to talk to you a little bit about the steps that we've been taking, and then secondarily, to introduce you to him if you haven't met him already. So Will, if you don't mind, talking to Council real quick.
Yes, good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Lukasik. Mr. Mayor, City Council, good afternoon. My name is Will Portfolio. I'm with CBRE. I'm a commercial office broker who's focused exclusively on tenant and buyer representation here in the city of Boca Raton, as well as throughout Palm Beach County. And I've been working with the city staff since mid-January on the potential temporary relocation of City Hall. So I have presented to date 13 options within the city limits that range from 30,000 to 100,000 square feet. That's obviously a wide range of space. But at one point, the determination had been made to let's evaluate potentially bifurcating certain departments. I think since then, we've, we've homed in on 65,000 to 75,000 square feet to ideally keep all the departments together under one roof, which also is better leverage for negotiating with these, these various landlords. So of those 13 options, we toured eight throughout the month of February. We shortlisted four options. Those options are Brick, North 40, which is the two-building complex at the northwest corner of Yamato and Congress, specifically the 5201 Congress Building, 6551 Park of Commerce, which is just to the east of the canal here from the building we're sitting in today, and then NCCI at the northern edge of, of the city that can, can provide a portion of one of the wings of their buildings. And so we've been negotiating since mid-March. We received the initial landlord proposals early April. We countered them late April. And as of today, I have three of those four responses back. We expect the fourth early this week, at which point we will update the financial model that we've been sharing internally with the city, negotiating these, these four options simultaneously on both a lease and some of them on a purchase basis, because some of the landlords are open to selling, some prefer to sell. And so we're, we're running multiple scenarios in parallel to provide you all with the, with the most amount of information so you can make the, the most informed decision. So I'll open it up to any questions, I guess, from...
Council members, questions? I'll start with some. Mr. Portfolio, about the, the four short-term options that are under discussion now, I saw that they're all roughly for 70,000 square feet and all of a base term of five years. What's the optionality in terms of either taking less square footage up front or sizing down to fewer than 70,000 square feet at any point during the five-year lease? And also, what about the opportunity to leave that lease or sublet freely? I'm, I'm asking in the context of we may not need 70,000 square feet, and we may not need five years.
Correct. I'll probably go in reverse order. We have sublease rights with all of these options, so that answers that part. Some of them are more flexible in terms of space than others. You know, some of these are larger spaces that we would be taking less square footage. So subject to space planning, we may be able to reduce that footprint. Some of them are two floors that are of a certain size where you sort of are, it's either, either all or nothing. It doesn't make sense for the landlord to subdivide, call it 5,000 out of 70,000 feet, and lease to a third party. So there, some are more flexible than others. We're asking for early termination options in all of these. We're asking for short-term renewal options in all of these, if by chance you happen to need more than five years. And actually, some of the landlords have responded with, with optionality in terms of short versus long-term leases and the differing economics associated therewith. I don't want to go into financials just because we're still actively negotiating, but we're running various scenarios.
And just for the record, a variety of other brokers represent these landlords. These are not all CBRE on both sides, correct?
Correct.
All right, thank you. Further questions? Mr. Wigder?
Yeah, thank you very much. I, yeah, certainly I agree not to get into too much detail at this time. I think the big picture, what I think about for the best program for the city is optionality and not the, you know, not the option term in a lease, but more, you know, having a variety of short-term, long-term, and purchase options so we can have the best information to make the, you know, make the right decision for the city. And likewise, you know, I know there is still the ongoing space needs discussion for City Hall, possible bifurcation, possible long-term, you know, so the idea is, is there that, you know, that it should be super flexible. And likewise, if we're asking for a lot of TI, which I don't think we should be in terms of short-term leases, you know, if, if it's truly flex space, the idea is we'll make do with what, what they have. But if we say, hey, you know what, this is a great spot for us to stick it out long-term. We should have the optionality to do so. And I think those corporate landlords that are, that are willing to do so will, you know, will benefit if they can have those kind of variety of options. So I just, so I thank you for exploring all the options, and I hope that you continue to do so, not just for swing space, but to say, hey, you know, if we want to stay, not just terminate early, but hey, maybe we want to stay because financially it might be the best thing for the city if, you know, if construction costs for new space are very significant, right? So I appreciate you looking at all the options.
Yep, thank you.
Further questions? All right, I think I may have some more questions offline, but I don't want to do it now in terms of the nitty-gritty on some of these proposals. So thank you, Mr. Portfolio.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you, Will.
Talking about the space needs for City Hall, so you should have received some information from Eva Garza. She's a consultant with CBRE, America's Consulting Group. Some of you have met her. She's been working on the analysis for us for our long-term space needs. So we've, she's developed a couple of scenarios that we want to ultimately review with you. You've seen some preliminary projections in terms of staffing and size requirements. We want to review all of that information with you before we get too far down the road as it relates to the interim master plan. Make sure that we have some policy direction in terms of sizing and location of City Hall and its services. So that, that's one of the things that, you know, we want to talk to you a little bit about when we meet with you individually.
Mr. Lukasik, are you prepared to present today or tomorrow?
Not today or tomorrow, but we would like to present to you over the course of the next week or so. And then on March 27th, or excuse me, May 27th, at your next meeting during the workshop, we would like to have a discussion with you and present that information then.
All right.
Okay. So that's a topic that we want to talk to you about. And then lastly, the interim master plan. So you'll receive that hopefully today. I don't really know what form I'm going to get it in. Obviously, if it's electronic, it'll be in your hands right away. If it's a hard copy, we'll get it to you as soon as possible. But we'll want some initial feedback from you all in terms of what you see in the plan relative to what your expectations have been. Getting to the May 27th workshop, so they're starting to strategic, strategic planning. We talked a lot about the need to have those specialized workshops. So we're starting to talk about the details. So we want to dedicate a good amount of time to talk a little bit about the campus, downtown campus master agreement. So we already have Terra and Frisbee prepared to present the interim master plan. So they'll, they'll be scheduled to come and talk to you as relates to what they're proposing, the rationale behind what they're proposing, and be able to entertain some questions from you all. It might be the case that we have some initial observations on the interim agreement that we might, or excuse me, the interim master plan that we want to share with you from a staff perspective or from a city perspective. So we, we might engage in some of that dialogue at the same time. But that, that's going to happen during that meeting. We might be able to get to the point where we have some discussions about the short-term options, depending upon where we are with the results from our proposals from the owners of the properties that we're evaluating. So put a, put an asterisk by that one. You know, if we have enough data and we can have that conversation, then we will. And then after we have our individual discussions with y'all, we want to engage in some policy discussion to make sure that we have some direction in terms of City Hall long-term. So size, location, make sure that we can try to get on the same page. Next, we want to talk about the timeline for the project, getting us, which is getting us to October 28th. So that'll get us to the master partnership agreement and the master plan. But we want to talk a little bit about what's involved in that process. So Turner Townsend, who is a project management, a program management group that is an affiliate of CBRE. They're working with us on a project management basis, working with all the work groups that we're establishing, which I'll talk about in a minute, making sure that we're identifying all those risks that we have along the critical path of getting a project on and trying to keep us on track. So we've got some strategies in place that Turner Townsend is starting to develop. We've got some administrative folks that are starting to keep information available for us so that we have that as we're moving through the process, make sure that all of our i's are dotted and t's are crossed. And then we have all the data that we need as we're moving forward to make sure that both the Terra and Frisbee group and the city group are all on the same page in terms of the information that we have and who's responsible for what. So they're, they're going to come, walk through the timeline, talk a little bit about critical path issues, some of the risks, and we'll update you on any of the due diligence work that's being done, as well as some of the studies and analyses that are being done by Terra and Frisbee as they're going through the process. And then lastly, we'll give you an update on the master partnership agreement, which is essentially a development agreement with Terra and Frisbee, between Terra Frisbee and the city. We'll, we'll give you some high-level, we'll have some high-level conversation about where we are, what sort of things that we're talking about, just to give you some sense as to where we are and see what kind of feedback that you might have. And then importantly, on June 10th, that's, that's the week that we need to make a decision to keep Terra and Frisbee moving forward. So that's the date where we need to get approval of the interim master plan. If we don't have some decisions as it relates to policy direction on the long-term strategy related to City Hall, you know, we'll revisit it at that meeting as well. But that, that June 10th meeting is going to be really important in terms of keeping Terra Frisbee moving and keeping us on track as it relates to the entire project. Any questions on the schedule or expectations?
Council members? Mr. Wigder?
Yeah. Sorry, not in lie there. I think there's a great deal of due diligence that has to happen here. I've said this in the past, where, you know, there's some certain things that are going to, that are going to be informing our decision-making. And so the due diligence of the costs of infrastructure, as we talked about during strategic planning briefly, there were some sidebar conversations with Mr. Zervis and Mr. Helper and Mr. Beer about, you know, obviously, the water sewer, you know, transplanting and the cost of those things. Likewise, with Mr. Portfolio here, you know, the space needs analysis. But in terms of the due diligence of the cost to build a City Hall, the cost to relocate a City Hall, the cost to partially, you know, looking at all these options are going to inform our decision-makings. So, you know, to me, there is a certain backwards component here where we need to know what's the cost to build a City Hall of 30,000 feet, 50,000 and 70,000 feet, you know, or whatever the space needs analysis. We're going to need some real ballpark figures in order for us to make those decisions. Same with relocation, same with partial relocation, and same with potentially buying another office building as we, you know, as we talked about for some partial or, you know, that hybrid model that, that you talked about. So, you know, I think some of these things, we won't be able to make a decision until we have these basic assumptions, because we want to make the best decision possible, and it has to be informed. So again, the fact that there's a meeting right after Memorial Day here, which is a truncated meeting because it's all going to be, you know, in one shot, and for us to have all of these things without first knowing what is the price of a City Hall, you know, again, and then to put that on the next meeting that we're going to just decide right there without knowing any of these costs. Mr. Lukasik, I think it's, you know, I just, I don't see how the planning can be done in such a way. I think the critical path necessitates us analyzing what are the costs before, before we can, you know, make these, make these types of, make these types... types of, make these types of decisions. So, you know, I guess, just what's your opinion on that?
Well, I don't disagree. You definitely need that information to make that policy decision. But it's a very compressed timeline. We're gathering that data right now. I think what's going to help us is, you know, finalizing Eva's work. So once we finalize Eva's work, we can start applying numbers to some of those options. And then that'll help you better inform your decision from a financial perspective. So you'll, you'll be able to understand it then.
I understand this, but I'm sorry to interrupt, but
No, it's okay.
Listen, the, the point here that I think we all need to, you know, be in agreement on is, you know, at least for me, I am not letting a timeline inform my decisions, you know, that this is a critical decision for our future, as we've been talking about for two years now. You know, it, in terms of having timelines for, right, this is, this is the most detailed, this today is the most detailed update that I've seen on this, and I am appreciative of it, really, I am. But now to get that critical path list and to start getting the schedule of when all of these reports are going to start coming out, the question that we need you and the staff to answer is, when are we going to know what these basic costs are? And, and the idea, Mr. Lukasik, at least in my opinion, friends, is that, you know, we need these numbers before we can make the decision. I will not let a timeline dictate us somehow not, you know, not, you know, not having, not having this detail because the timeline is dictating it, you know. The, the way that a project is managed, you know, and having the information should be, should be dictating it. So I think if you could just, if we could start getting to a point where we're pinpointing, okay, this is when these work group teams, this is when they're going to start to have their reports, you know, if you could start getting those things to us, I do feel that the things are going to fall into place. And likewise, you know, it's unfair to our financial services team, to Mr. Zervis, to everyone else to, you know, you know, to, to say, okay, well, now we're going to have to, you know, figure out what the bond is going to be for this, or the funding is going to be for this, or how we're going to securitize the ground lease for this, you know. There's, there's a tremendous amount of work that has to happen here. And I understand, you know, it's been going on for a long time, but we do need the detailed information, at least I do, colleagues, in order to make these, you know, in order to make these serious, long-term, as we're saying, 60-year decisions. So I hope you could get a little more tight on the, on the individual reporting for those things.
Totally understand. I hear you. We have a model that CBRE has helped us build already. So once we start figuring out what are the square footage numbers going to look like for City Hall, we'll be able to inform you from a policy perspective as to what that impact is going to be. We're also taking a look at some of the other strategies as it relates to, does City Hall stay on, on property while there's development going on or not, you know, because that was an option that was given to us. We know what the policy direction is, but we're evaluating that. And Terran Frisbee is evaluating that as well. So we're in the process of doing all that. The data's being compiled. We're not going to ask you to make a policy decision without you having that data available. So as a, for instance, if by May 27th, the council isn't ready to make that type of decision, we'll, we'll push it to the meeting in June. Okay? But, but I think we're going to have the information for you. I'm only saying the meeting in June because, just in case. But we're, we're planning on being able to have enough information for you to make a decision or give some general policy direction on May 27th.
I agree. I appreciate that. But likewise, in terms of like the REC master plan, quote "master plan," you know, the question is, if it's not the full REC master plan, if it's the, you know, if it's the portion of the REC master plan that we need in order to effectuate, to effectuate this, you know, it's important for us to have those numbers. I know Mr. Stevens and Ms. Harms talked summarily about what it's going to be, but we're going to need to start pinpointing these things and start to pinpoint the programming. And likewise, all these decisions, all the costs associated with this are going to then inform, you know, the programming that, that, that we all think is appropriate for this area, that the private sector is going to participate in, and likewise, and the revenue that can help pay for these things. So, you know, they are all interrelated. And yeah, it's, it's not something that we could just say, okay, well, you know, we'll figure out later. And by the way, it's an extra $50 million we didn't think about, you know. We're, we're going to have to have this data before these, these decisions are made. And, you know, going back to the strategic planning, in this way, it's, you know, we might not use the word dependent upon each other, but they're certainly very correlated and connected to each other. And, you know, we will need that.
Again, I don't, I can't argue with anything that you're saying. We, we agree with you. Now, some of it's going to have to be, you know, you're going to have to make iterative decisions because we can make a decision on City Hall and what the future looks like. But I'll be honest with you, we're not going to have the numbers on all of the infrastructure. So it's just not going to be available within the next two weeks, next three weeks. So some of it's going to be iterative. And, you know, and we'll do the best that we can as we're going through this process, give you the data that you need in order to make a policy decision when we need one. But the, but the purpose of this short timeline, getting you to early June, is to help us inform the basic building blocks of what's going to happen financially with the plan. Until we know what's going to happen with City Hall, we can't really start putting numbers together. So we need to start figuring that out. And it's going to drive what Terran Frisbee does ultimately with our development plan. So, so that's an important decision that we need to help you make so both Terran Frisbee and the city can evaluate a plan going forward.
Okay.
I, I hear you. I understand exactly what you're saying.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, thank you. What I took from that whole exchange was that you said, Mr. Lukasik, you will have the data for us by the next meeting. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay.
We have a model built.
From all this discussion, that is the most important thing.
Yes.
Because what I heard Mr. Wigder saying, and I heard it a little differently, was not that the, that we need the data by the timeline. This council has set a timeline. Our partners are working toward it. Every year delay delays the impact on this project that has been our top priority for now three straight goal settings. So it's important that we get that. I would say this, I know staff has not honed in on the exact number of square feet, but what I've discussed with Terran Frisbee is their model for a city hall with flexible space, whether it's a city hall main building or an additional office building behind, which we could take as additional space that would be compatible with that place. So if we needed to level up, we needed to level down, we could do that. We'd have that flexibility over time. I would encourage staff to continue to work on its model and really refine that because I think once you do that, we can get order of magnitude, whether it's your up or down 5, 10, 15,000 square feet, you can, you know, you, you get the incremental costs, so we know how to go with that. I think that will give us the data that we need to move on. But I'm, you know, we have a lot already tied up, and there's a sequencing to this. Let me ask you this, are there any policy, I mean, I know you're going to discuss this with us individually next week, or this week, apparently, but are there any things that you need direction on now that would help you clarify? We have been asking this council for an understanding of the number of square feet that we anticipate would be needed in the future. CBRE is working on it, staff's working on it. The sooner we hone in on that, even before we move into the new temporary space, I think would help because at least I've expressed some concern that 70,000 for the interim space may be too high, let alone the long-term. Do you need more direction today on any of those things, or are you prepared to present an options, a set of options at different sizes?
We do have, we do have a variety of options that we want to present to you, that we want to discuss with you. We want to have our model filled out so that we can say, hey, this is what the impact of this, this option is going to be, and this is what the cost is. So, so you can, you can understand from an operational and a cost impact.
Okay. All right, thank you. Further questions? Ms. Drucker?
Yeah, so I guess just a little clarification on these individual meetings. I guess maybe this is just me, the reason we are not having this discussion is maybe because we're missing one proposal of these four, because now you're going to meet with each individual one of us and give us all the information under number two. And then we're going to come back here on the 27th and then try to get us five on the same page based on these discussions. Is that why, because I would have thought today would have been a perfect opportunity to review whatever had to be done with the council because we're all here. This is our workshop. We could stay as long as possible. Our meetings are pretty epic these days, and we would have had a lot more time then by the time we come to May 27th, which I agree with Mr. Wigder, it's a condensed meeting because we're off Memorial Day. So that's a condensed meeting. And then we go into June 10th, and then we're off until July 14th. So I guess the reason we're not having that conversation is because we're missing, possibly, we're missing one of these proposals, is what I kind of wrote down in my notes. And when are we planning to schedule these meetings? Because as you know, the council, you have to get us all in to have this meeting to go over this, and I, and I guess you don't have all this information. So again, just a little confused as to why we don't have that information now and why we're not having it at this workshop.
Okay, so a couple of things. One, one is we're not delaying because we haven't received all the data on the short-term options. So that's not the rationale for delaying a discussion on, you know, long-term solutions for City Hall. The, the delay in having that conversation is just because we haven't had an opportunity to fully run the model yet to understand what the financial ramifications are going to be. So we should have that information this week. We should have a model set up. We should have all your options available, and then we can have a, a conversation with you. The reason that we're choosing to do it one-on-one is because we want to make sure that we have some detailed conversations with you upfront before we, you know, sit down in a public meeting. So if you have some initial questions, we can go back and do some investigation to make sure that we have the information that you need as soon as possible.
Okay, all right.
And, and I apologize that, you know, the timing is so tight and we're, we're, we're cramping the schedule. We understand that. But we're doing what we can to get you to the point where we can make some policy decisions.
I just, I'm, I'm a little hesitant just because this is a perfect opportunity to have that information. We don't have the interim agreements. We're going to have to review the interim agreement, the term letter sheets that we have. You mentioned something from Eva Garza. I don't, I, I search and search, and maybe I could do that later, but I didn't see anything. Maybe it was sent through you, through her. But if you, if you search her name, I didn't have anything that she gave us to review. So, but that could just be, I couldn't find it. So again, I think that we've been asking for this information, and I know there's a lot of work that's going in with staff, and we had strategic planning last week, and there's just been a lot of different meetings. I just think that, I guess my, my feedback maybe to Mr. Brown is, on that May 27th condensed meeting, let's be very strategic as to what we're putting on the agenda and not scheduling for a regular city council meeting because we're going to have to spend, what I feel, our good amount of time having discussion during the workshop meeting. And I believe that meeting starts at 10:00. So even based on that, so I think that we need to make sure whatever is on that agenda, that maybe we need to make sure that we give enough time for this.
The meeting is presently scheduled to start at 10:00. I was going to suggest that we start at 9:00 if everybody's available to do that, just to provide more time that day, if it's possible. We have plenty of time to notice the public that we're starting at 9:00.
Mayor Singer.
The other thing I would emphasize is that the, the regular agenda for that day will not have any significant public hearing matters on it so that we can focus our attention on the campus and the, the review that we need to undertake as well as any decisions we need to make. And again, just to emphasize what Mr. Lukasik was saying, one of the reasons that we want to have the individual meetings is we don't want to discuss the pricing in public until we've made some, just, we figured out everything we have and can, can consider what the best option, you know, what we, what we would recommend to you as staff and CBRE would be the best options moving forward before we get together in a public setting and discuss the numbers.
All right. Well, first, can we just go to Mr. Brown's suggestion? I'm fine with starting at 9:00 AM that day. Anyone else? I'm seeing two thumbs up already. Is that Mr. Wigder?
Mr. Brown knows, it's a point of personal privilege, my friends. My daughter's high school graduation is that day, and I will be leaving at 2:00 PM. If I'm in the middle of a sentence, I will be leaving at 2:00 PM on that day. So I apologize. But yeah, I will start at 7:00 AM if you'd like, but the earlier the better. Or I would even propose a special meeting on Wednesday afternoon after the Kravitz thing if it's necessary because I understand that this is a very important matter. But I do have a personal, a family matter that I have to leave to at 2:00 PM.
Ms. Drucker?
Mayor Singer, I will be out of town Wednesday at a conference for the city, and that is, so I can't do Wednesday. I think Tuesday, if you want to start at 8:00, we could start at 8:30. We can, I guess it's an extra hour?
Eight.
Eight? I, I don't care.
All those in favor of 8:00 AM on Tuesday? All right. Well, we got that clarified. Ms. Drucker, just for point of information, are you available any remainder of time that week?
I am not.
All righty. All right. And then, Mr. Lukasik, I would suggest that maybe between now and tomorrow evening, because we can always revisit this conversation then, you might want to brief us, whether it's individually or otherwise. Think of how much information you can put before us now, even if we don't get into the specific pricing of each of the four options. And I'll just add, Mr. Wigder's point was an availing one about maybe we might isolate out the build-out. I don't know what build-outs, you know, I don't know the difference is in the quality of the build-out that exists now, but if we're talking flex space and temporary space, it will certainly be improvement over what we've had now at City Hall. So we don't have, necessarily have to get to the optimal space that we'll eventually have. So I think that may be another way to cut down some of the costs, cut some out of the optionality and the different, different things we have to consider. And finally, you know, this is something, I think it's more appropriate to, let's focus on getting to yes rather than saying condensed or short, because I don't want to, you know, we've been aware of this in the pipeline for quite some time. So now's the time to be moving. Let me go to Ms. Nakliss, if I may. Ms. Nakliss?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm also out the rest of the week, that, that week too. So just in case there's anything else scheduled. Eva Garza, I have not received an email from her either. So was the information that came through you from?
I probably sent it, or Leanne may have sent it. I will send it again.
Thank you.
I made a note to myself to send it again.
Thank you. And the response due date for the, the counter proposals was Friday, right?
It was.
Okay. All right. So whoever the fourth is, I hope that they, you know, get it to you in the next hour and a half because that's not a good way to, to, you know, move ahead with this. But, and I hope the individual meetings are set up, you know, we do that immediately. So I wish we had had that on the schedule before, just with all the centennial stuff next week too. All right, thank you.
Understood. And Mr. Lukasik, just that. And I would encourage, there have been times where CBRE has referred to me, mentioned, well, they sent a report along and we have not seen that. I would suggest that the material that comes to staff, come promptly to council. For example, there was some comparison done of something, you know, some summary done of these spaces that was shared last week, and that was only after CBRE was talking and referred to it. I think that might help move, move the process along. We're ultimately deciding, we're in it, so share as you get it.
Understood.
Thank you. Ms. Thompson, any questions?
No.
Ms. Drucker?
The only thing I wanted to say since we're all five here is if we would have to have a special meeting between the 27th and the 10th, that we look at that now because the calendars, like Ms. Nakliss says, there is, they're available, they're booked, they book out, we book out weeks. Everybody knows that. We have tons of things going on that are just not government campus, but there's city-related meetings and, I don't know, TPA, Treasure Coast, all the different things. So like, I would like to look at those dates now and make sure that we block time if we're going to go into a special meeting between May 27th and, and June 10th. Instead of saying June 10th, let's go into a special meeting, because then that's going to be throwing off your timeline.
Concur. Would anyone like to else look, like to look at their schedule?
Yep.
I'll start. I have it up. I'm here June 2nd and June 3rd with pretty good availability. On June 2nd, it is my daughter's, as a graduation ceremony as well, but that will, should terminate by midday, so I'm available that whole afternoon. The 3rd is quite open for me.
June 3rd is completely open for me.
Please, anyone else?
June 3rd is good for me, too.
Not at that week.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not available.
Are you available electronically if necessary?
I'm available electronically.
All right. Mr. Thompson?
Good.
Why don't we, why don't we, heaven forbid we need it, but why don't we all know that June 3rd might be a target date? Ms. Drucker?
Or June 9th is our regularly scheduled meeting. Maybe we start earlier or have a special meeting before, we've done that before, which is Monday before the 10th.
I think we can do that, but I would suggest that, I don't know, you know, we're kind of planning a what-if and what-if, and I prefer, appreciate the planning here. I'd say, why don't we target June 3rd, only because I'm worried staff, I don't know what timing
Okay.
staff might need if June 9th to June 10th is enough time. But
I'm just trying to put dates, just being proactive, I think I said that earlier.
Yes.
Let's think through Z, and we're always thinking like reactive. We're always playing defense instead of offense. So let's just try to get the dates on, on the calendar before that, yeah.
I'm available June 9th as well. Anyone else want, is everyone back? Is everyone in Boca Raton that day? All right. Well, yes, we had a council workshop that day, so certainly. So we were possibly starting earlier, yes. Yes, very well. All right. I think we've got some optionality there.
Yes.
And I know you'll have optionality for us on the different plans. on the different plans.
Excellent, thank you.
Mr. Brown, any further things on this item?
Andy, did you have anything else to provide in the report today?
Nothing on the schedule, and I can talk to you, when we meet with you individually, I can talk to you about the work groups if you'd like, as opposed to talking about it now, unless you want to talk about.
Work groups.
The work groups, yeah.
I'm happy to just talk to you about it when we have an opportunity to meet.
All right. I'm fine with it now, tomorrow, whenever you think appropriate. I think the, you've outlined, let me just, for the benefit of the public, not looking at this sheet, there are work groups consisting of city and CBRE, the legal teams, the proposer and the city manager's office, communications and oversight, regulatory framework group, an interim master plan group, a mobility, traffic and multimodal connectivity group, an infrastructure and utilities group, a civic buildings and facilities group, and a financing and capital plan work group. So that, now, that's what we're all looking at. Is there anything else you wanted to, high level now for the public?
No, I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of all those groups and that they were working and what stage of work they were in.
Very well. All right, thank you.
And many individuals are on multiple groups, as you would expect.
Yes. All right. All right, then, then we will, if there's nothing further from CBRE or staff, we'll open up this to, we will open this up to public comment. Anyone wishing to comment? Seeing no one come forward, we'll close that item. We'll now turn to city manager reports for discussion of a new police facility.
Thank you, Mayor Jim Zervis, and team will present our work to date on the new police services headquarters. Chief Muccio is going to join him, as well as Mr. Beer. As you know, we have been talking about the replacement police facility for some time. This is something we need to do regardless of what else may be occurring, and it's been discussed for what, at least 10 years, Michelle? 15 years? So it is time, and this is an update on the work we've done to date and where we think we will be going.
Thank you. Chief, or Mr. Zervis?
Jim's going to start.
Mr. Zervis.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Jim Zervis, deputy city manager and chief financial officer for the city. With me today is Police Chief Muccio and Public Works and Engineering Director Zach Beer. We're going to give your council and the public just an update on where we are with this police headquarters project. As City Manager Brown had mentioned, this has been going on for some time, and work is really full speed ahead on this particular project. So welcome the opportunity to let you know where we're at with the project. Just as an overview, the current police headquarters was built in 1987, and it's located across the street from City Hall on 2nd. It is in the same location as the prior building from 1965. So that's been the, really, the location for police headquarters for the city has been there for some time. That was considered really central to the city at the time. The city limits didn't go as far west, and we'll look at kind of the geographic footprint in a minute, but it was really coordinated right adjacent to downtown, obviously, and next to the railroad tracks. At the time, the city was 27.14 square miles. It's really not that much smaller than we are today, but population-wise, significantly smaller. So 58,821 in population back in 1987, and to protect that population, we had about 145 police employees. You can see our footprint has expanded a little bit between 1986 and 2025. During this time, our population has gone from that 58,821. We're close to 100,000 now. The last statistic I saw was 99,974, but I've seen some putting us over that $100,000 number. That's about a 70% increase. So when we, when we talk about that increase from 1965 to where we are today, it's roughly 70%. Area-wise, we are at 29.1 square miles, up about 7.22% from 1965. So the footprint you can see in the, in the two maps. We annexed going west to include Boca Town Center, I believe, and some of those adjacent western communities, as well as a little bit to the north. Obviously, no room for growth to the east or to the south, so primarily growing north and west. Police department-wise, as I mentioned, we had about 145 employees at that time, back in 1965. We have 186 more than that, so we are about 331 today. So that's a 128% increase. So when you look at that square footage that we've had historically, you can understand, helps paint the picture as to why we're kind of busting at the seams in that older facility, and really the location, which is constrained by development on all sides. I'm going to turn it over to Chief Muccio to talk a little bit about the current conditions and challenges we face from a policing aspect within the community.
Thank you. As Mr. Zervis said, we have grown significantly with our personnel, and right now, we are in about, with equipment and people, we are in about five different locations, which is very difficult when you want to have a centralization of your operation. We would have to, if something happened, someone would have to drive out to one location to get a vehicle, a specialized vehicle, to get to a scene, which actually, you know, puts a lot more time on everything that we do. Also, we have, in this building alone, we have some detectives that we had to move them out here because of just our space needs, and we need to coordinate. The detectives at the downtown headquarters right now, they work with the detectives here, but they have to do it over phone now, or they have to try to meet up somewhere when it would be easier just to go to someone's cubicle to get help, whether it be getting help from the computer crimes unit by downloading a phone or what have you. They still have to come out here to do that. One of the biggest problems we have is our building has aged so much, and it's pretty worn. Vulnerability to weather. We have to evacuate our building if there's a storm coming. So you'll see a lot of us here, and we put people around the city and other buildings.
So as Chief Muccio mentioned, we have a few constraints around and concerns around the operations and location and suitability for those operations. So really, we are constrained by development on all sides, and so as we look to expand those specialized units and equipments, being able to co-locate those items in a central location, somewhere that is secure and safe from the public, but also gives us enough room to effectively manage those assets and personnel, and centralize that into an area that is central to the population we're trying to serve, and gives us access to that population readily. Right now, with the train tracks on one side, and then just traffic, you know, that's around downtown and the neighboring residential communities makes that challenging. Adapting to that increased population and crime complexity, so we just have changes in the nature of policing, as Chief Muccio had mentioned, and the location where we're really no longer in the center. And we've had that discussion as with respect to kind of where City Hall is going to be, but there is definitely more growth to the north and to the west. And so when we look at a map in just a second about the location, I think it speaks for itself as to why that is a more suitable location and gives us more room to operate. So this new location over at this, adjacent to the Spanish River Library, really does address many of those concerns. You can see on the map here, the blue star is the current police headquarters, and the green star is the location adjacent to the Spanish River Library. The library location in the bottom graphic with the map, you can see the blue shaded portion, which is the area that we are considering for this operation. It will not inhibit the path, the public path that goes around the lake. We are trying to preserve that public access for that amenity, so if you're, in case you're looking. But we are looking at access both onto Spanish River and then the adjacent technology. There is a canal or a culvert that runs along Spanish River Boulevard that we're having to contend with in part of the design, but that's part of the discussions we're having now. So really, we're looking at that full space and how to appropriately use that. The advantages here, geographically, you can see the green star versus the blue star, we're really more centrally located in where the population is growing, but it really provides key access to a number of transportation corridors. So it's much easier for staff to be able to respond to calls for service, jumping on, whether it's 95 or Northwest 2nd, you know, they can get north, south, east, west much more efficiently from that location than the current location. And it gives us a much bigger footprint to work with. So you can, you can, I mean, you're well aware of the station where it's at now. We really can't do much but go up, which can add office space, but doesn't give us a lot of maneuverability for things like special equipment, special units, and just a little more space between those operations and the public as well.
Any questions, Mayor? Mr. Zervis, before you go off this slide, of the roughly 20-acre site there, how many acres do you anticipate for the police headquarters, parking, that sort of thing, for, you know, the new facility? And how close to the intersection would it be? I'm imagining pretty close.
So I don't know that we can answer, we're not, we're not at that level of design yet, so I'm going to hedge and tell you we're going to come back with that information. At this point, we're considering the whole site as part of the area for design. And where we are in the process, just to give you kind of an update, we have done a space analysis for both current needs, 2035 and out to 2045, working with an architect. So we understand the square footage that we think we're going to need for each specific bureau and component of policing, as well as the square footage that we, or the area that we think we need for things like special equipment, firing range, parking, guest parking, all of these different elements that have to go in this facility. So we have all of that square footage data. We're now working with the architect to actualize that into an actual model in a building and see where we can gain efficiencies and how we lay things out. Things like, well, you may not need three conference rooms, maybe you need two because of how you arrange those within a particular building. We're doing that work right now, and that will really feed into the answer to your question, Mayor, which is how do these sit then on the site, and how close are they to the roadway?
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Wiger?
Yes, thank you. How large is the current police station right now?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Zach Beer, Public Works and Engineering Director. The current police station is 30,000 square feet.
And how many acres is it on?
I don't know the acreage of the police site off the top of my head.
A couple acres.
It's not, I would say.
I'm guessing two-ish?
Yeah, probably more, somewhere between two and six acres. I can get that really quick.
Two and six, and then obviously, as the city has grown, and the police force has grown, and the equipment and all the other stuff, my understanding from just talking to the chief and you and other people is that the police equipment is now, the word stash is not the right word, but maybe it is, is stashed all over the place. Some of it's here, some of it's municipal, some of it is wherever it has to be, because obviously, we cannot contain all the police equipment in a two-acre or three-acre site downtown. Is that right?
Yeah, we have to have, the equipment needs to be secured, and it needs to have video. So it is on different city sites, one being a fire banyan site. We'd have some equipment over there.
Banyan, right. And then, you were talking, Chief and Mr. Zervis, about the fact that the detectives and whatnot are here, is the idea that once a new police station is established, that we will be, or the police department will be vacating its current use of the space here and giving it back to either, I guess, emergency management or FD or something like that?
We still have a training component. This is still our training center. We have different equipment set up in different areas of the, of this building that we would leave it here because we won't have enough space to do it in another building.
Okay. And I think Mr. Zervis has beat me to it, but I think it's 4.39 acres.
That's correct.
I was going to credit Mr. Kaler with that same answer, so thank you. Mr. Brown?
Chief, just for the public's information, we show on the map that's on the screen right now, moving from downtown up to Spanish River Library site. Just so the public's aware, we have zones in the city that cover the city, and it doesn't mean that the police will not be responding as fast as they do today to the southwest and the southeast parts of the city. Is that correct?
Correct. Our city's separated into districts, and then within the districts, there are zones. The patrol officers, that's their office. Wherever their zone is, that's their office. Their vehicle's their office, and that's their area that they're patrolling. They're not going to be stationed at the police department. They will come in before their shifts for a briefing. If they have to bring evidence in to drop it, they would come into the building, but they're out, they're always out and about. They're never at the police department full-time.
Thanks.
For the questions now, or?
Just a comment. So I like moving over here, especially because we just recently did the CIMD ordinance, and there's more affordable workforce housing over here, so I think that'll be a good thing for our force and hopefully maybe attract some people to come to live and work and play in Boca. So there's five different locations. After this is built, hopefully, then we'll have downtown's location, smaller substation. We would have the new, and we would keep this building. So we'd still have three different locations.
So that, I believe, or, go ahead. There's a, we have a substation at Town Center, so there's that location as well. Yeah.
So we're going to have the, we're going to have the footprint downtown, so that we have a substation downtown. This building, we would still occupy it for our training purposes, because we do have a lot of things set up here, like I said, plus we have communications. We just built communications a few years back. We have a biological processing lab, and there's some other operations that I'm not going to say publicly, but they're going to be here. And then all of, everyone else would be in one building so that we can work together.
Thank you. Chief?
All right, some of our operational features that we're going to be looking at is a community room. We don't have that in the current police department. It was never thought in to incorporate it. Also, having more of a visitor-friendly, when people come in actually knowing where to go, having everything in the lobby that they need to get. Right now, if you have to pick up property or if you have to pick up reports, we have to send you one place, and then we have to wait till our property folks come up front, and then you have to go into a secured area, because again, you know, it's property. One of the things is the car seat installation. That's big. We get a lot of appointments for that, and sometimes we can't do it because of the weather. So by having an area that has maybe an overhang where a car can pull up, and one of our officers can help with the car, car seat installation is helpful. Also, a safe swap zone where, whether it be people are buying online, or whether parents are exchanging children, we'll have an area where they can go, and it's videoed so we can watch and make sure everything is okay. And we don't want to make the mistakes that, you know, back in the 80s, never would we have thought that there would be computer crimes units, threat assessment risk protection units, we would have drone units. Those were not in anyone's vision at the time. So we want to be a little bit more forward-looking and try to have space for our current needs and try to figure out what could be the future. And then, of course, an energy-efficient building, because right now, it's not. Built in the 80s, and it was before Hurricane Andrew also. Built in the 80s, and it was before Hurricane Andrew also. Some of the benefits that we're looking for is by consolidating everything. We'll have accountability and efficiencies, because we'll be able to see everyone, we'll be able to be together. Again, having people come in, having a community room where we can invite people in for meetings, and have that exchange. And it's like I was saying, being a little bit more forward-thinking in the modern facility with technology. And then, of course, having our specialized teams where their equipment is. It'll be more efficient for our responses. And things have gotten, are a lot different than they were in the 80s when our building was done, and we need security. We need to make a building that's secure, so those who come to the building are secure, and those who work within the building are secure. And then our centralized location, as we, Mr. Zerbas was talking about, by having it in a centralized location, those that are stationed at the police department, which are usually the detectives, crime scene, you have your officers on the road, and they're all patrolling. But if something happens, those detectives are still police officers. They will jump in their cars, and they will respond. And by being there, they can pretty much hit any quadrant in the city. And then, of course, our healthier working environment than, you know, a 1980s building, having a healthier building, and to help out with employee retention and recruitment.
So to go over where we are with regards to the schedule, we are currently in Phase 1 on this list, so preliminary planning. I'd mentioned that we had finished the special needs assessment. We're refining that right now. It's a very detailed assessment, so it actually goes through every specific, not just high-level kind of bureau, but function down to desks and personal space and conference room, and really, a full analysis of those space needs. That's been completed. We're just kind of refining those numbers. And as I had mentioned, the next step, and we're working with the architectural firm, ADG. And ADG is well-respected in this space. They've built several public safety facilities, and are frequent speakers on this very topic. So that's, it's a good firm to be working with. They've done the space needs analysis with us, so their expertise helps inform our process. The next step is to take that information and actually compile it into a plan for a building, or buildings, with supporting facilities, like the garage, like firing range, all these, you know, parking, all of these elements, to start to put some efficiencies in place, and then to develop a site plan based on that information. We will be back to you once we have more information to share in that regard, so we can adjust and keep you informed as to the process. That is really expected to take the rest of this calendar year, which would put us into Phase 2 in the beginning of 2026, and that is design and permitting. So that's actually getting into the detailed construction design and permitting. And then you can see construction to start really at the end of '26, early '27, with completion two years after that, so a two-year build. So it's, this is a, this is a long process. It's 48 months in duration. Hopefully, we can accelerate some of those components, but this is, you know, this is the largest public works project that the city has undertaken, so as a single project. So I know we're working on a large, you know, campus development plan, but when it comes to a single city facility that we're constructing, this is, I think this is the biggest one that we've done. So we're trying to take the appropriate time and process to ensure the best outcome, and be responsible with that. This also, this timeline, as far as I'm aware, doesn't interfere with anything that's going on with the campus redevelopment project. And so that's, this is where we stand. So if there's any questions as to the schedule or duration, we're happy to discuss that now.
Mr. Mayor? Please, Mr. Wiger.
Thank you. Couple things. When do you think that you'll have some, let's call it, I understand we're in the early stages, some ballpark budgeting for something like this?
So I would expect to have some, both ballpark budgeting and some options in that regard, as well as some illustrations as to what this facility's gonna look like. And I'm gonna, I'm looking to Mr. Beer, but I'm gonna say August, September. Is that a good estimate?
Yeah, I think the fall timeframe will be at the point where we can move from our space planning, actually putting the pieces together, and start doing some site layout, and have a better understanding of that.
Thank you. And likewise, I know you and I have had some preliminary conversations that, obviously, to undertake a project like this financially would require the city floating a, my, a general obligations bond. When would you anticipate something like that, from a time horizon, would be ready to be, to go forward?
So that, I do have one more slide here, and that is exactly what you're asking about, Councilmember Wiger. So this is, the financing for this project will likely include a general obligation bond. We're expecting a 30-year term, tax-exempt municipal bond issue, which is an ad valorem tax levy. We would, we would expect, based on the project timeline, March 26 would be a reasonable time to go, be prepared to go to the voters to ask that question. So that gives us plenty of time to inform your board as to design, functionality, budget, you know, what that looks like for a potential debt issuance this summer, and then be prepared for March as that likely timeframe. We can go earlier or later, but that would coincide with a municipal election, which would also save the city a fairly significant amount of money, is what we're told by the county, as opposed to holding a special election. So, you know, cost-wise, it makes sense to target that March 26 date. Now tomorrow, on tomorrow's agenda, there is what's called a reimbursement resolution. That reimbursement resolution does not obligate in any way the City Council to pursue a bond issuance. All the reimbursement resolution does is preserve the city's ability that if there is a future bond issuance for this project, that we're able to recover our out-of-pocket costs that we're incurring now in the design phase, ultimately, from those bond proceeds, that we can be reimbursed for these out-of-pocket costs. But again, it doesn't obligate the city to move forward with a bond issue. And we will be looking at all forms of financing that are available. If there are other financing structures out there that make sense, we will bring those options to your council as well.
Further questions? So just to highlight, the number in there is a placeholder. One, we haven't conferred we're going out for a bond, and two, it may not be that number at all.
That's correct.
Very good. All right. Further questions, then? All right, thank you. I believe that concludes that item, so Mr. Brown, it's the remainder of your report.
I think that Deputy Mayor Anaklis is gonna bring this up, but there's a June 26 TPA meeting that's occurring on the 26th because of Juneteenth, which would be the normal meeting date. And I think there's some, we need to make sure that we know who's representing the city at the TPA meeting.
I saw Mr. Thompson raise his hand. Is that a volunteer?
So moved.
He's volunteering. Is that all right, Mr. Wiger?
So Mr. Wiger's gonna cover for my spot, and Mr. Thompson's gonna cover for Fran, and then we'll just go ahead and notify the TPA of the alternates, and then you'll all get your agenda reviews, and you'll get your packets, and you'll go represent as well. Thank you.
Very well. It'll be B-Team Day at the TPA.
Sorry?
Mr. Thompson?
Say, I couldn't hear you.
It'll be B-Team Day at the TPA.
No, no, no. Also, Mr. Wiger is my alternate for Palm Beach League of Cities on May 28th, so he is going to also cover me that day for the meeting.
I am also a board member.
Correct.
So I don't know if that changes the way things happen. I don't, because it's not, is it two votes, because we're a bigger city? I thought the bigger cities get, we might need to check about that.
We might have to ask that question. We have time. For TPA, for TPA, we have two voting members. For the Palm Beach League of Cities, we always had one, plus an alternate. But you are a board member, congratulations, yes. That's very important, that we finally got a board member back on there. We'll have to check that charter. I don't know.
Would someone like to volunteer to check that charter?
I'll check. I'll ask them.
So if it's not Mr. Wiger on May 28th, I will need an alternate for May 28th. Although, that's the installation meeting, so everyone's welcome to come to that meeting or any other meetings.
All right, thank you. Whoever's checking, could you also check to see if we need to designate another alternate formally, if you can't be at anymore?
I'll talk to Mr. Brown about it, yes.
Thank you. Very well. All right. Mr. Brown, it's still your report.
Nothing else, thank you.
City District Report, Mr. Kaler?
I have no report.
Councilmember Report, starting with Mr. Thompson?
No report, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Anaklis?
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Brown, for bringing up the TPA. Thank you for volunteering to cover that. I just wanted to say thank you, once again, we touched on it, at strategic planning, but thank you to all the staff, and all the Boca Bike Club members, and all the volunteers that came out to support our first bike rodeo last weekend. It was really well-attended. It was a sold-out event, at 60 kids registered, and some of the kids even learned how to ride without their training wheels, which was great. And it was just really a great day in Boca, and just wanted to thank you, Mr. Brown, for facilitating that as well.
Thank you. Ms. Drucker?
No report, thank you.
Mr. Wiger?
Nothing further, thank you.
Thank you. Celebrate our centennial by getting your swag at Boca100.com. Check out our, if you have tickets already, for Weezer and Fountains of Wayne, September, May, excuse me, Saturday, May 24th. We might do some other things in September, but they haven't been announced yet. Our drone shows Sunday, May 25th. Our Memorial Day observance, traditionally, on Memorial Day, the morning of Monday, May 26. So much more information is available at MyBocaUS. You can find it out there, because we are adjourned at 4:04. Thank you.